Good evening, welcome to our October Board Meeting for the Lake Mills School District. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification and meeting notice?
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader and posted at the Lake Mills Library, Lake Mills Post Office, and the Bank of Lake Mills on Friday, September 18th. It was also put on the district website. We amended the agenda on October 4th. We needed to add to Action Item G, addition of early college credit request.
Good, thank you. Could we rise and do the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert Imperio?
Here.
David Rado?
Here.
Here. Agenda revisions approval, we have an additional one.
No, we amended that before the 24 hours, so it's...
Okay, no additions, so could we have an approval?
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second?
Moved in second and approve the agenda as printed. All in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same side, the ayes have it, it carries. We're going to do the employee recognition right now. I'm going to ask the board to come out in the front here, and... I'm going to go this direction. That means that they've been here at least, at least, these teachers and workers in the school district have been here at least 25 years, if not more. And I'm going to read a little bit about each one and ask them to come up here. So the first one I'm going to read about is Beth Cordy. So Beth, I'm going to have you come up and, you can stand right here.
Okay. Now, don't get embarrassed. All right.
Now, when I was asked to write a synopsis of my 25 years of teaching in Lake Mills, I started to panic because I didn't know where to begin. Honestly, I should begin 45 years ago in a kindergarten classroom at Scher's Elementary School in Watertown. I didn't know that. The day I met my teacher, Mrs. Christensen, is the day I knew I would be a teacher. Mrs. Christensen was kind, smiley, and she created a fun place for my friends and I to play and learn. My desire to teach was solidified in third grade when I spent a year with Ms. Keppel. And I remember her, by the way. I loved everything about her, and I decided that I, too, would be a third-grade teacher someday, just like her. My dream came true in 1991 when I was hired to teach third grade in Merrill, Wisconsin. I was fortunate to teach there for two years before being hired to teach third grade in Lake Mills. I had the pleasure of teaching third grade for 20 years in Lake Mills. I was pretty sure it was the only grade for me, and I had hoped to stay in third grade until retirement. However, five years ago, I switched to second grade, and it turns out that I love second graders just as much as third graders. There aren't many professions in which you get to hear things like, "Now, listen carefully." "I was the ring barrier in a wedding this weekend." Or, "Can I go put my book in my backpack?" Or, "When a second grader tells you that the windshield factor will be really low on a certain winter day." When I think about my 25 years in Lake Mills, I think about the more than 500 students I've taught, and that there are more than 500 young people who hopefully carry a piece of my heart with them, as I have a piece of every student I've ever taught tucked away neatly inside my heart. So Beth, I have to find you here. This plaque is "For Excellence in Education, Lake Mills Area School District," presented to Beth Cordy for 25 years of service, presented this 8th day of October 2018. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So Glenn, come on down, as they say. Right there. I'd like to start by thanking my family and friends for their support over the years. I'm especially grateful for the inspiration and encouragement given to me by my wife, Lisa and son Charlie. In addition, I've been lucky enough to work with some of the most nurturing, caring, and supportive colleagues one could hope for. I can assure the citizens of Lake Mills School District, your children are well cared for. I've also been fortunate to work with some outstanding administrators and school boards. A common thread among all of them has been the autonomy given to teachers to be the key decision-makers in the educational process. Every administrator I've worked with has always encouraged teachers to be risk-takers. I'd like to issue a special thank you to former principal Boyd Forrest, who trusted me enough to hire me. Of course, I'd also like to say thank you to the hundreds of students whom I've crossed paths with. You've made it easy to come to school every day. From spirit ditto machines to colored printers, overhead projectors, to smart boards, film strips, to streaming video, much has changed in education over the past 30 years. However, one thing will always remain a constant. I believe the foundation of good teaching is building strong relationships with students, and that's what I've always tried to do. I've cherished my time as a public school teacher for many reasons. Every year is different. Each fall, we get to start anew. Every day brings new challenges. Most of all, I'm proud to be a part of public education that lives with the philosophy, "Every student, every day." So Glenn, "For Excellence in Education, Lake Mills Area School District," presented to Glenn Shanky for 30 years of service, presented in the 8th day of October 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next honoree is Monica Yandrie. Monica, come on down. I have taught special education for 30 years in Lake Mills. I received a bachelor's and master's degree in special ed education from UW-Madison. I've taught at the elementary school, middle school, and high school. I've worked with all ages from kindergarten through post-12th grade. I've been a mentor for new teachers since the mentoring program began. I have facilitated professional development in areas of autism, classroom management, and behavior support programs. Now, that's basically what Monica said. We've got more to add to that. Monica is too humble to share that she is an outstanding teacher, who has positively impacted the lives of countless students with disabilities within the school walls and in the community. Just as important, she models advocacy, support, and respect for individuals with disabilities for all our students and staff. Monica, "For Excellence in Education, Lake Mills Area School District," presents to you Monica Yandrie for 30 years of service on the 8th day of October 2018. Congratulations. Right there, Sandy. Sandy has been a devoted member of our food service staff for 30 years, with most of the years as a kitchen lead in the elementary school. She became known as the breakfast lady, as she was the original server when the district began the breakfast program. In this role, she was often the first hello and smile for many, many students to start the day. And I can't tell you how important that is, at the beginning of the day, that the students get to start the day off correctly. Over the years, Sandy has seen many changes in her department from punch cards to computer codes, to our New Green Elementary School, which Sandy helped design during the building process. Sandy also worked as a custodian for us over the past 30 years. She faithfully cleaned our buildings in the summer, and for many years, served as a night custodian. We truly appreciate Sandy's flexibility and dedication to our staff and students. Sandy is currently enjoying retirement and has welcomed a new puppy into the family. "For Excellence in Education, Lake Mills Area School District," presents to you Sandra Zimmerman for 30 years of service, this 8th day of October 2018. Congratulations. It's a long time to teach, but it's a great school district, I believe, to work in, too. I think all of them would agree to that. So let's give them one final round of applause. Cooper Buckhouse, the student board representative. Cooper?
So I've got a little bit of what's happening at the high school. Sports-wise, tennis, one conference, both varsity and JV, and they had eight girls make it to sectionals, although that's where their season ended, they had a really good run. Soccer, their total record is nine, four, and two, and they're five and three in conference, and that makes them fourth in conference. They made the playoffs and matchups are decided tomorrow night. Football is six and two on the year, and they are three and one in conference. They've secured a playoff spot and looking for a better seeding position when they play Luther Prep this Friday for the homecoming game. Volleyball are 21 and five, and are six and two in conference, and they play this Thursday at Lakeside Lutheran. Cross-country, the girls' team is moving up in the state rankings, and they are now ranked 11th. And the boys are consistently improving times, and they hope to make above 10th at sectionals this year. Around the school, musical is in full swing, and everybody has been working hard to make this year's production a success. And homecoming week started today, so there'll be dress-up days, class competitions, decorating competitions, which will all be worth points, and the class with the highest point total will win the spirit trophy at the end of the week, which is presented at the homecoming game.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Cooper. Dr. Don Delaney?
Yes, we received one letter, and it's a card from Sean Adam and family thanking the district for their support, and flowers received for the memorial of his father Roger.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robert Imperio, Facility Committee.
Efforts continue to provide information on the upcoming referendum to members of the community. We had an open house here on October...
First.
First. Right, good, thank you. And that included tours of the building to give people an opportunity to see what the condition of the school. There's also been a lot of presentations made to various civic groups in the community. This has been really spearheaded by Ms. Strike, Ms. Rockard, and Mr. Vogel. We're going to be having another open house on the 16th of October, here in this building in the library. A lot of very good questions have been raised by members of the community, and those questions have been responded to in a frequently asked questions segment that is available on our website. So we continue to try to provide information, and certainly hope that if people have questions, that they are not bashful, that they continue to ask them. So thank you very much to the community for your interest and involvement.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to administrative reports. Mr. Vogel.
We have, like Cooper said, we have a lot going on with homecoming week and the weeks preceding that, you know, getting ready for this week. I think the students are, you know, the participation today with the dress-up day was extremely high, so we'll see what the rest of the week holds, but we've got good kids, we'll be fine. Just to let you know, our staff, the last week of September, participated in a safety training in partnership with the Lake Mills City Police Department and the Jefferson County Sheriff Department, and that went extremely well. Again, like Cooper said, with students preparing for the musical, the sports kind of leading into playoff time, super busy around here, but at the same time, you know, we're leading into the end of first quarter, so a lot going on, a lot going on for sure, but we're excited and again, look to have a safe homecoming week and take it from there.
Questions from anybody?
Well, my goals are in there, too.
Good. Well, have a good week for homecoming and a big win on Friday.
Yeah, let's hope so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bauer?
So there's a little disagreement at the admin table back there about how we are covering our goals tonight, but thanks, Cale, for leading the way. We had our first activity night last Friday. It was very fun to hang out with the kids after school, and we have this Thursday then, we have parent-teacher conferences. We decided to do ours at the middle school at mid-quarter so that parents had a little more lead time to support their children if they needed to before the end of the quarter, so that will be this Thursday night and next Thursday night. At the end of October, right before they have that four-day break, October 24th, we will be having Spectober, where the students, the different groups of students will play each other and then play the teachers for the final round, and then we will also be doing our large-group community service activity on that day in the afternoon as well. At the beginning of November, I will be attending a national conference, the ASCD Conference on equitable practices, and that's kind of what's happening at the middle school for right now. So I just wanted to, I won't go through all my goals, but I did want to let you know that the summer, I took a very deep dive into not only what the staff had told me going into the fall, but some reflections that Pam and I discussed with some feedback that she had given me, and then kind of thought to myself, what do I really want from this middle school? And I really want it to be a world-class middle school. So I, you know, I read a lot and I do a lot of research, so what are the things that make this a world-class middle school? And then break it down into what are the actionable next steps to reach those goals? So if you'll notice in my goals, I have six tenants that I really feel came down to making a world-class middle school. And so when you see my goals there, you'll see they're pretty broken down, but just know that there's a bigger process in place, and I just wanted you to know that about those goals, so you can kind of see the bigger picture. Any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Strike is Mrs. Thompson.
Yes, so an update from the elementary school. I'm just going to read what Mrs. Thompson submitted to us today. It's been a very busy month at the elementary school, building routines for students. So throughout the month of September, we practice what to do in case of evacuation, shelter, and safety emergencies. Teachers collaborated together at the September in-service to learn about small group instruction in Ready Math and how to further support students in all areas of phonics and word study. And specialists worked with the special education coordinator, social worker in school, psychologists, and therapists to learn strategies to help students to be successful outside the classroom environment. The PTO hosted a dance Friday night with an estimated 300 students in attendance. Thank you to Mrs. Everson and Mrs. Wellman for coordinating the event. The elementary school is also in the midst of the box top fundraiser through the PTO, and if anyone in the community has any, they can send those box tops to the school office. This week, the elementary school will focus on fire prevention with the Lake Mills Fire Department, as they present information to the students on ways to stay safe at home. Friday, they'll celebrate homecoming at a good character assembly, and again, the elementary school goals are attached to your report as well.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brown, Special Ed Director, Assistant Middle School Principal, and various other assignments.
Good evening. I just wanted to tell you about kind of four main areas that we'll be working on in the special ed department as goals for this year. We're going to be focusing on our youngest learners this year, working with our early childhood team to continue to refine our practices and screening practices for those youngest learners. We are going to do some book studies this year with the staff around autism, behavior, and dyslexia, and that will probably continue on into the summer and potentially next year, depending on how deep we go into those areas. We're going to make sure that we continue to share our de-escalation strategies around the NVCI practices with all the staff outside of the special ed department. And then just today, I received our final, like, kind of check-off from our self-assessment from DPI, that said that we've completed and passed all of our components of that self-assessment that was kind of a full year from last year. So we're going to take DPI's recommendations for compliance and best practices, and then really focus on that piece for our professional development with staff as well.
Questions? Thank you. Ms. Silver?
We're going to hope that that comes back on. Oh, yay!
It's coming.
I don't need it right away, but we had a little mishap while you guys were all having refreshments and the thing broke, and we had to get some help. Okay, so the first thing I want to do is update you on the safety grant. We are in round two of the safety grant, and we've been awarded our second grant, which is kind of confusing, because the total that's publicized is $97,287, but $10,000 of that is, we're getting an extra $10,000 from what our allocation was, because we are hosting the training for the teachers to attend, and the police department is the one that is being gracious enough to host that. So that $10,000 is like, not ours, if that makes any sense. It's really about that training. But things that I would like to highlight that we are there, part of the grant pays for the subs for the 12 teachers to go to that training, and the state requires that we send 10% of our teachers to the training, so we have 115 teachers, I rounded up, we are sending 12 teachers. We got a bunch of little things, but a couple of big things, too. We're adding more cameras to the elementary school, we're replacing the camera on the outside of the middle school for that recess area and the field area, and the biggest thing is we're replacing the intercom system here at the high school and adding some new speakers. One of the things that we found is there's a lot of spaces in this high school that currently do not, you can't hear the intercom, and so if there was a safety threat, kids would not necessarily know if there was an announcement made to take, that it was a lockdown. We fear for kids, and so because we wrote that into the safety grant, that was where the bulk of this one went. So that's pretty awesome, and Dr. Mason, I need your signature on this grant.
Okay.
The next thing I'm going to report on is the summer school report. So a couple of things just to note, we had 43 different offerings at the elementary school this summer, we had 47 different offerings at the middle school. Now, lots of those classes were duplicated, so they were offered anywhere between two or three or four times, so kids could take them at different times throughout the day because we had four periods for kids, and then we had three general high school offerings. We also had five middle school experiences, like the DC trip that gets counted into summer school. We had 17 high school experiences, including a Peru trip, so lots of fun, different things there. We had 17 students successfully complete credit recovery programs this summer, and we had 166 students participate in swim lessons, so pretty cool. Our total of students, resident students that participated in summer school was 885 students participated in summer school, and then we had 35 additional non-residents participate in summer school. So our total FTE was at 76. So lots of fun. It was really great to be in the schools with the kids and learning with them and setting a fun tone for them. So looking forward to next year.
Good question. So were we about the same as last year then?
I think so, because I didn't run it last year, I never saw the report last year, so I think it was, I think I was told we were right within like a couple.
Yeah, that's what it seemed like.
Yeah. Okay, so now we're going to talk data. So we've had the forward exam results, we've been able to look at them for quite some time now, so that we can kind of interpret them, but they were just unembargoed from the state this month, so we can finally talk about them publicly, which is always fun, right? So a couple of things to keep in mind, we have three different assessments that we use. We have the Wisconsin Forward Exam, which is grades three through eight, English, language arts, and math. Fourth and eighth grade also takes the science exam, and then four, eight, and 10 also take the social studies exam. ACT is given in grades 11 as a state assessment, and then the ACT Aspire is given in grades nine and 10 as a state assessment. So just so you have an idea, we had 652 students participate in the forward exam in Lake Mills and for English, language, arts, and math, and then we had 208 for science and 299 in social studies. So that's pretty awesome. The forward exam is an online assessment, there's a couple different formats for it, so not, everybody's screen looks the same, but it is, I think they just jumble up the questions, it's the same test for every kid and the grade level. It is not an adaptable test like the MAP or the I-Ready Assessment. It doesn't change the answers based on your responses, but same answers, or same questions for everybody. The ACT assessment, we had 103 students in Lake Mills take it last year, so our data's going to look at that. That is still a paper and pencil assessment, the state has chosen to do it that way. You can take it computerized in some places, but for the state assessment, it is a paper and pencil assessment. It takes the kids about six hours to finish the whole assessment. They come in at eight and they leave about 1:00. They come in at eight and they leave about 1:30. So it's kind of an interesting, long day. But again, that's a college readiness assessment. Kids can take that test as many times as they want. For the statewide assessment, it is, they only look at the date that we give it to them in Lake Mills on like the third Thursday in February or whenever the state sets the date. That's the date that we're using, that, those are the assessment results that we use. Kids get a free college report that they can report then to four different colleges. And then if they don't want to report, they don't have to, but it is something that the state pays for that, for them. We're also finding that more and more colleges, Madison Colleges uses the ACT now as a form of an acceptance and placement kind of exam. So it's not just university-driven, but a lot of different places are starting to use those results from kids to make it relevant for more students. Dynamic learning maps, if I remember correctly, we had four students last year participate this. And this is the alternative assessment for students who have a cognitive disability. So the federal government requires that all students are assessed. And this is the way to make, to kind of level the playing field for students who have a significant cognitive disability. So a couple of things just to note, all cut scores are rigorous. They changed those a couple of years ago when they were doing the WKCE to try to nationally norm them. That's all I'm going to say about that, though. The one thing that I want to caution, this is our third year on the forward exam. So when we're looking at trends over time, it's good to know, it's really nice to have, finally have a third year because three years kind of starts to mark the time where you can see the trends. When we look at closing the gaps data on the report card and stuff like that, which we don't have yet, but that takes five years of data. And that's, if you go back five years, the last three years were forward exam. The year before that was the Badger exam. And the year before that was the WKCE. So it's really hard to see the trends when the assessment changes. So it's really nice to see how we're doing with the trends now with the forward exam with three years of data. So what does our data say? What does it show? So I've got three years' worth of data in here for you to look at. And what the blue columns are, are how Lake Mills has done. So the first column is 2015-16. The white column next to it is the state in 2015-16, what the average is. The next blue one is 16-17. The next white one's the state for 16-17. The last two columns there are the most recent years. Blue is Lake Mills, white is the state. And then the very last column is the difference between Lake Mills and the state. So we're always constantly looking to see, how do we compare to the students in the state? So one of the things that we're noticing is that our scores in English, language, arts are increasing. It's going up a little slower than what we would like it to do. So we're kind of analyzing where are the gaps in that, in that data. And so one of the things that elementary is doing is implementing a phonics program with the units of study. It's a new program that Lucy Cawkins put out this year. But that's in kindergarten and first grade. So that's not going to affect our data for a couple more years. So we have to come up with strategies that is going to affect our data in a couple of years or sooner than that. I would really like to point out our sixth and seventh grade data. Last year, the middle school worked really hard. We met every other week as an ELA team with Jen and myself. And we talked about strategies to use five through eight to see what we could do to improve the data. And one of the things I noticed, seventh grade, remarkable jump. We had a huge increase there in seventh grade. And he will say those meetings helped probably more than anything else. Sixth grade, another nice jump. Eighth grade, you're going to see it looks like we dipped. And the hard thing about eighth grade is we had 24.5% of our kids not take the test in eighth grade. So when you look at our data, it says we had 31.4% proficient. If you add that 24.5, that means, you get what I'm saying? Like it's 34, it's 31.4% of 100% of our eighth graders, 24% of them didn't take the test. So it's not like 34% of the kids who took the test. Am I making sense? Yes?
I understand.
Pam understands. Okay, if you have questions about that, I'll talk about it again in math. But it looks like a really low number of our eighth graders are proficient or advanced. That's not necessarily true because you already automatically took 24% of them out. It's not 31% of the kids who took the test, it's 31% of all of our eighth graders. So if we had 100 of them, 30 of them were proficient or advanced, 20 of them didn't even try. Didn't, I don't want to say didn't try, that's not a nice way to say it, but did not, were not in the test results. Yes. So that's something that we're cognizant of when we look at this data. Math, a couple of things to note, last year, we saw some increases pretty much across the board. We are above the state at every grade except for eighth, and we have that same issue where 24% of the kids didn't take the test. So that's, if we even had half of those kids get, be proficient or advanced on the test, that number would be higher than the state.
Are you, are you finding that in the other grade levels, you have similar numbers of kids? It's just that grade...
No. It was an anomaly last year. They, that group has had a higher number of kids, but usually it was like 10 or 12 kids. Last year, we had 30 kids on the eighth grade opt-out of the test. So that was, that was a huge issue. And I have some fears with that because we see that kids who take more standardized tests do better on standardized tests. So when we get to the ACT, the more practice that they have on standardized tests, the better they do on the ACT. So that's something that we really want people to know, and that's been proven in data over and over and over again. So that's why, one of the things we're watching to see, when they take the forward exam, that's not necessarily the best predictor of how we'll score on the ACT, but it is another similar standardized test. And we can adapt instruction to meet that. So that was an anomaly.
Thank you.
Well, and we're also looking at it, you know, you're taking how last year's seventh graders did and their eighth grade...
Oh, just wait, I'll get there.
Okay.
I know where you're going.
So the dip isn't as low, you know, it's less than what you're...
Yep, absolutely. So a couple of things with math, we were watching our elementary scores last year. And we had implemented iReady as an instructional strategy to help us increase those math scores, and it did. And then we also implemented CPM at the middle school levels, and we're watching the math scores there. And that is really exciting to watch because our kids did better. And usually when you have your first year of data with a new assessment, there's an implementation dip, and that didn't happen. So we're really excited to see that, that data say strong. So that's a really good thing. Science is an odd one to look at because our fourth graders stayed about the same as the previous fourth graders and did better than the state. But again, those eighth graders are missing that 24%. So that looks like it went down. Same thing happened in social studies. Our fourth graders went on a field trip, on a social studies field trip, the week of the test, and their scores went way up. Imagine that, that they went on a social studies field trip and were in that social studies brain set, brain, you know, state of mind, and their scores went up on social studies. Active learning, good thing. Eighth grade went down, not a whole lot, but went down. And 10th grade went up. And Mr. Hicklin and I worked, he's the one who teaches the 10th graders. So we worked a little bit on strategies for review beforehand. And then I was in the room when he administered the test for the first time ever in life. So that, we don't know if that had an influence or not, but testing conditions. And then when we look at the ACT, what's very interesting about our ACT data this year is that kids either did really well on the ACT or they didn't. So our average dropped a little bit with the ACT, but our percent proficient or advanced, the state converts a score from the ACT and makes it into cut scores for proficient and advanced. You'll see that it's 40.2% in all three test categories. Like I said, the kids who did well on the assessment did really well in all areas, but the kids who didn't struggled. And so we'll look at that when we get to closing the gaps. And so you can see, the next slide shows some of the scores, the average ACT score. So remember, the highest average ACT score, I believe, is 36. So our, our average score for the composite score was 20.9, which is higher than the state average of 19.9. So we're still staying there, which is a good thing. Then, we also compare cohorts. And this is the next slide, and I think this is what you were getting at before, where I'm watching to see, if you follow the blue, those are the same kids. So you go blue, blue to blue, and then you can see the difference between Lake Mills 2018 to 2016. So like this group, I said that wrong. This 40% is better than, two years ago, they did 2% better than they did two years ago. So we also watched that data to compare how are kids doing cohort-wise because we want more kids proficient or advanced. We're pretty lucky in Lake Mills, our cohorts stay pretty stable. We don't have a whole influx of new kids and a whole lot of influx of kids leaving. So it's typically the same, pretty much the same group of kids, which is awesome.
Do you see that, the fifth, starting fifth grade? Wow, 28 to 50.
Yes. That's that group of seventh graders, that awesomeness.
Yeah.
That was a huge, huge jump in data. And then for math, we do the exact same thing. So watching, watching to see how our cohorts do from year to year. Then we watch three areas of students that they consider students who are likely to have an achievement gap, meaning unlikely to perform as well as the students who have, who don't have whatever label is there. So if they're an English learner, they compare English learners to non-English learners, and how are we doing? This is an interesting one because we had a little bit of an influx. We had one student who came to us directly from Mexico last year in seventh grade. But our, it looks like our ELL data went down. But this data shows, the ELL data for kids who have, are currently considered ELL. So it takes out anybody who's been dismissed from ELL. So that's a really tough thing because it's constantly changing, the cohorts constantly changing. Because last year, I think we dismissed eight students from that ELL group. And so as they dismiss, what I'm more interested in is not necessarily how much are, how are the current ELL, I am interested in that. But I'm really interested to watch how kids are doing after they're dismissed from ELL services. And that data looks really nice. It's not on here on a spreadsheet, but that, just know that I'm watching that. And as we look at report cards, they do include those kids with the closing the gaps data, which is really interesting that they do that. But I'm glad they do. Another group is, they compare economic disadvantaged as defined by kids eligible for free and reduced lunch compared to students who are not economically disadvantaged, and how are we doing there? We traditionally, it depends on the grade level, as far as if we're doing better than the state or if it's not as good as the state. So that's one of our areas of high interest to see how we can do that. It's a tricky group to do because we can't tell anybody who they are. So you're going to help the kids who are economically disadvantaged, but you don't get to know who they are. So it's, it's a challenge. And then ACT comparisons. You'll notice I did not put any comparisons for ACT with ELL because we only had one ELL student and that took the ACT last year in 11th grade, which is normal because usually by the time kids get to high school, unless they came to the US later than everybody else, there's not as many at the high school. But I didn't want that to be identifiable to anybody. And then we look at students with disabilities as the third group with our students. And again, they're much like the economically disadvantaged where some grades are higher than the state, some grades are lower than the state. But we look at those pretty closely and see how we can make sure that our kids have an even playing field when they're taking the test. So...
Sorry.
Go.
So the economic disadvantage comparison, so, but we didn't, we don't get to see that over time. We just see the snapshot of...
Just the snapshot for this time.
Yeah, okay.
I will show you more overtime data when the report cards come out. And I'll show you how we're closing or widening the gap with that. Yep. That's one of the calculations on the report card, and I make it into a really nice graph that visualizes it for me because I'm a visual person. So lots of different stuff. We're holding data meetings this next month. I'll be meeting with all ELA math teachers, social studies and science teachers. Every building is working on community building of some sort, which we know that teacher relationships, just like Mr. Shanky said earlier, teacher relationships with kids are the number one predictor for success in school, which is pretty cool. We've increased ELL staff, and then we had the issue with Spanish. So Tara's kind of feeling split between Spanish and ELL right now, but we're still working to try to cover that as best we can. Increase in staffing in special education, new math curriculum this year at the elementary school. One of the things that we really did not like about the last math curriculum was the gap data. You saw huge gaps, even though we were doing a little bit better. But for economically disadvantaged, our students with disabilities and our ELL students, they did not do well in math with that curriculum. And ELA is, like I said earlier, implementing new phonics resources because we've seen that as a gap. And I work with Garth Larson, who's someone, he was a curriculum director in Winnicott County. He is now venturing out on his own for Learning First. But really, he brings in a lot of experts, book authors and stuff like that for us to learn from. So it's really nice to learn best practices from districts that are moving forward. So any questions about data?
Questions at all? All right, I have a question.
Okay.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to anyway.
Try.
So all this data that we've got, if you had to summarize that for a paper or for the public, what would you say?
Lake Mills is improving. Our data shows that we're improving. Our data shows that our kids are learning in our district and our teachers are becoming even more data savvy. They know how to talk the data, they know how to, what influence they have on the data, and that excites me more than anything else, is that they're starting to see their influence on the data.
And overall, how do we compare with the state?
We are, we do better than the state. ELA is a little bit lower, but it's getting better.
Good, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you, Jay.
Okay, my goals are in there for you to see. They include data.
Okay. Mrs. Brockert.
Thank you. First of all, September 21st was the third Friday of our September, and so that was our official count date. I do have summary information of our enrollment. It does look like we're up about 15 students compared to last year, which is good. Many districts across the state are dealt with declining enrollment, so I'm very happy to see that we have an increase in our enrollment. And then secondly, and that, that data will be used to recalculate our revenue limit calculation. So that's what's key about that. The second thing is the National School Lunch Week is October 15th through the 19th, and the proclamation is attached to the agenda information about that. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Strike.
So just to close out the group, my goals were updated and attached for you, and then also my draft of the goals for 1819. I hope that you see as you check out, all of the school goals and administrative goals are aligned with the board priorities that we've set and have continued to work on year after year. And we know that that is the key to success, is staying the course, setting, setting high expectations, and everyone focusing on those same goals repeatedly over time. And then I just want to touch upon the recreation department. Just a reminder that there is so much more to our recreation department than just youth activities. And so in Ben's report this month, you'll, you'll see him talk about the adult fitness classes that have been added, the adult open gyms. There's information in his report about the upcoming basketball and things that we've restructured with the basketball program, as well as trips that he's coordinating with Club 55 and also for TOTS. And then finally, you know, this last summer, we added the playground program, a childcare program to, to complete students' days. And so there's a summary report from Alexis, the director there, and also the summary of the survey. That was a really great experience for all the students, and there's lots of information in your packet about that as well.
Good, thank you. Any community input?
Mr. Klutz, Ms. Morris, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Galstead would like to speak.
Uh-oh. Not that you'll like this. We thought it was auspicious enough to have us all here in attendance, who could, to let you know that today at the LMEA, LMESA meeting, I am pleased to announce that members in attendance unanimously voted to support both questions on the upcoming school referendum. We recognize and appreciate the diverse methods and various venues through which the LMASD is engaging the electorate and keeping the community informed. And we look forward to doing our part to help bring the referendum to a successful conclusion.
Good, thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to action items. Approval of September 10th Regular Board of Education meeting minutes, and then could we do the Finance Committee meeting proceedings also? Take those two together?
I move the board approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2018 Regular Board of Education meeting and the September 10th, 2018 Finance Committee proceedings.
Second.
Moving second to approve... Moved and seconded to approve the September 10th Regular Board of Education meeting minutes and the September 10th Finance Committee meetings. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, that's passed. Approval of vouchers and invoices.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,456,581.2 for the month of September 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the vouchers and invoices. Any questions, concerns, or anything? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Treasurer's Report.
I move the board approve the Treasurer's Report for the month of September 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the Treasurer's Report. Any questions on that? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of short-term borrowing for the 18-19 school year.
Well, I make the following motion, be it resolved by the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education, that pursuant to the provisions of Section 67.212, Pren 8, Pren A, Pren 1, and 8A, Wisconsin statutes, the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education shall authorize a short-term line of credit not to exceed $1 million with the Bank of Lake Mills pursuant to the Bill of Law and per the provisions set up in the complete resolution document. The entire resolution will be part of the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve short-term borrowing. Questions on that? We had that reviewed for us previously at the Finance Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of June 19, or 2019 Junior Optimists trip to International Convention.
This is actually my trip. I'm, I'm the advisor of Junior Optimists with the assistance now of Wendy Brockert here at the high school. It's the largest club in the high school, not to brag, but it's pretty amazing kids. Last year, I had 140 students doing volunteer work throughout the community. And so the Optimists in Lake Mills are very much in favor of us taking as many students as want to go to the International Convention this summer. So this is approval for an overnight trip, this will be counted as summer school minutes.
I move the board approve the June 2019 Junior Optimists trip to the International Convention in Louisville, Kentucky. It is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no responsibility for any funds lost for any reason.
Second. Moved and seconded by Mr. Di Perio. Questions or comments on that? It's wonderful. And who's going to accompany you?
I need some more adults.
All right, all right, roll call, please.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Start College Now and Early College Credit Requests.
These are new terms for what you used to see as youth options, okay? So Start College Now refers for, to anything at Madison College or a technical school, and Early College Credit refers to students from our school taking university courses. So there's a short list there, you can see that they mainly focus on CNA classes and a few other things, so it's a very short list. Again, that number has decreased over the years by the use of Jedi.
I'll move the board approve the Start College Now and Early College Credit Requests for the second semester as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the Start College Now and Early College Credit Requests. Any comments? Roll call, Megan.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Early Graduation Requests.
How, we have a request to graduate early, the young lady's in the audience this evening, and her very articulate letter about her reasons for that request are attached. Is attached.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the Early Graduation Request as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Early Graduation Request. Any questions or comments? Congratulations. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. All right, approval of Support Staff Resignation.
We have a resignation of one of our van drivers this evening.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the Support Staff Resignation of Mr. Philip Wall, Van Driver, and thank him for his service to the students, families, and community of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the Support Staff Resignation. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Co-Curricular Resignations.
We have three coaching resignations for the upcoming season attached.
I move the board approve the following co-curricular resignations, and thank the coaches for their dedication to the students of the Lake Mills Area School District. Mr. Carl Gates, JV2 Girls Basketball Coach, Mr. Glenn Shanky, 8th Grade Boys Basketball Coach, and Ms. Sierra Curran, 7th Grade Girls Basketball Coach.
Second.
Second, Rachel, thank you. Questions on those, comments? Roll call, please.
David Rado?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Support Staff Letters of Assignment.
We had one opening for a Para Education and Special Education, and a part-time person from within, that was already on staff, applied for that job, which means that we needed to move around some hours, so this sounds very complicated, but it really all does lend itself to one original posting. And then there's also a replacement van driver on this list as well.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following Support Staff Letters of Assignment, and welcome the individuals to the Lake Mills Area School District. Tamara Kowalski is Special Education Para Educator, and Daniel Olson is Van Driver. I also move the board approve the following Special Education Para Educators increase in hours. Nicole Garmin from 26.25 hours to 40 hours, and Nicole Stettler from 20 hours to 26 hours.
Second.
Seconded by Rachel. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Gifts.
And we're very fortunate to have a pretty expansive list, again, this evening, of gifts from the community for the month.
I move the board accept the following gifts, and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. $127.38 from the Lake Mills Culvers to the High School FFA, $1,000 from the Lake Mills Optimists to the High School Junior Optimists Club for the 2019 trip to the International Junior Optimists Convention, and $1,382.3 of school supplies, backpacks, and new clothes to the elementary school donated by Lynn Larson. The following donations have been made to the High School Drama Club. $100 from Allison Schmeizer, $150 from Pat and Boyd Forrest, $150 from Terry and Pam Strike, $150 from Sean and Marty Ballig and Stan Bond, $150 from Cape, $150 from American Legion Auxiliary Unit 67, $150 from American Legion Post Number 67, $150 from Dental Associates of Lake Mills, $150 from Topless Towing and Repair, Inc., $225 from Loose Homes, $300 from Susan Buckholz.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve all of those wonderful gifts. Questions, comments on those?
Very, very impressive.
Very impressive, yes. I agree. Megan, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Di Perio?
Aye.
David Rado?